Pop, let me. Yes. Short arms. All right. I will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education, which was duly noticed on April 6, 2023 through posting a notification to the press in accordance with Wisconsin 19.84. Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Millard?
Thank you, Board President Myers. It's my pleasure to introduce this evening Dr. Jessica Grant, the Principal of Harrison Elementary. Dr. Grant has been in education since 2000 and has been a member of the Jamesville School District since 2002. Jessica started as the Principal at Harrison Elementary in 2010 and in 2013 was recognized as an Administrator of the Year. Dr. Grant has three master's degrees and a doctorate in education. She is also licensed by the Wisconsin Department of Education as a Principal, Director of Instruction, and Superintendent. Dr. Grant, who do you have with you tonight?
All right, thank you very much. Could I have a motion to -- so we're going to have to make an adjustment to our agenda. We are going to -- we are going to remove from the agenda 3.4 and 3.5. Could I have a motion to accept the agenda with the amendment of the removal of 3.4 and 3.5?
Slow motion.
Okay. I heard that from Commissioner Audrey and I believe Commissioner Henowal. Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you. Safety message, Commissioner Murray?
Have you looked outside your window lately? Blue skies, birds chirping, and 70 degrees, looks like spring. Perfect time and perfect weather to spend outside getting your yard in outdoor spaces in tip-top shape. Here's some safety tips. Number one, know your equipment before operating a new lawnmower. Read the owner's manual. Same with your weed trimmer. Check your owner's manual and operate safely. Here's one about ladder safety. You've heard it over and over again, but always check to make sure your ladder is firmly set on a level surface. Never set ladders on boxes or other objects to make the ladder reach higher areas. Lock or barricade any doors that may open towards ladders. Also, never stand on the top rung of a ladder. Your balance could be jeopardized. And there's several of them here. You can Google lots, I'm gonna pick one more. Watch your children. Every year, thousands of children nationwide are injured by lawn care tools. That's why we recommend keeping all small children inside while mooring or trimming. At a minimum, do not allow children younger than 12 to operate a push lawnmower and anyone under the age of 16 to operate a driving lawnmower. Do not take children on rides on a riding lawnmower.
Thank you very much. So you're saying that that means you cannot put a ladder on top of a Dodge Caravan with a chainsaw to cut the limb of a tree. I've seen it. That's why I'm just clarifying, because I've actually seen that. So, yeah. Yeah, okay. Yeah. All right. Thank you very much. Student presenters tonight, we have Grace Marada from Craig High School. Welcome, Grace.
Hello, members of the school board. My name is Grace Marada. I'm here at Craig High School and I'm the stand-in for the school board representative tonight. I'm involved in student council, key club, science honor society, Spanish honor society, national honor society, and the grant. There are many exciting things happening at Craig in the near future. First of all, Craig will have our annual honorable ceremony where members of our Jamesville community are inducted into the honor ball to commemorate their accomplishments. Our honorable ceremony will be Friday, April 14. Three members are inducted into the honor ball every year. The first community member is Richard Hemmings, a lawyer and community advocate who has served Jamesville, Wisconsin for over 50 years. He served in the United States Army and earned an Army Commendation Medal. He also worked as an attorney for the school districts of Jamesville and Milton and served on the Jamesville school. Hemming also worked as a baseball and basketball coach for almost two decades. We thank him for all he has done for our community. The second inductee, Anne Walgren, has been a leader at one of the largest corporations in the world and a passionate advocate for women's empowerment. Walgren was the corporate vice president of global menu strategy and innovation at McDouble's for 16 years, which allowed her to lead the company toward their creation of plant-based products such as burgers. These products are now offered in many countries in Europe. Walgren is the ambassador for the leading women's executive program aimed at improving the advancement of young women. We are thankful for all that she has done, not just for the Jamesville community, but women everywhere. The last inductee is Nancy Narnes, who served as a nurse, caregiver, and creator during her life. Nancy started her education at Swedish-American Hospital in Rockford and continued her education at Johns Hopkins University, earning a degree in nursing. After traveling the country as a surgical nurse, Nancy returned to Jamesville with her husband, where she worked as a supervisor and third shift nurse at General Motors for 30 years. She created the food drive at General Motors to assist underprivileged families in Jamesville, later labeled back to home. Nancy also was crucial in creating the nursing associate degree at Blackhawk Technical College. Nancy Narnes passed away peacefully on October 13, 2022, yet her legacy of care for others lives on. Another recent event at Craig was the pre-ACT testing and senior day, which both occurred today, April 11. Freshmen and sophomore students took the pre-ACT digital testing to prepare for the ACT next year. At senior day, seniors were asked to come to Craig for part of the day to complete some activities such as putting their handprints on the walls of the hallway and receiving their caps and gowns. A recent tradition initiated by Dr. Lyon is having the retirees place their handprints on the walls next to students. As we are nearing the end of the year at Craig, there are many exciting fun events coming up. Prom will be April 29 at 8:00 p.m. at the Jamesville Country Club. Prom court will be selected soon and the prom committee is working very hard to decorate and plan the event. Graduation is fast approaching, so Craig is holding auditions this month to be the senior class of 2023 speaker. The selection for the speaker will be made by the end of this month. Another upcoming important date is the eighth grade tours held at Craig on May 17, where eighth grade students will be taken through their classes in various stations in the different departments such as art and computer science. May 25th will be a day full of events for seniors at Craig. Senior awards will be presented and the senior picnic will be held as well. The third event on this day is the grad hall, which is a tradition held at Craig where all seniors will choose their elementary school to visit, now as a near graduate of Craig's. I would also like to mention that the spring sports season has begun and we wish all athletes and their respective Jamesville alumns this season. To conclude, I'd like to thank the staff and teachers at Craig for all that they do for us, but also like to thank all of the members of the school board for your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Grace. So, we don't -- do we have someone from Parker? No, no? Okay, all right, so then we will move on. I have no citizen comments tonight, and so let's move on to the consent agenda. Could I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Slow motion.
Okay. Okay, that was Commissioner Audrey and then Commissioner Dahmerhausen on the second. All in favor?
Question.
Yes.
I'd like to have 2.9 reviewed for discussion.
Okay. So, do you accept that?
Yes.
As a -- and Carl, do you accept that as well?
I will.
Okay. All right. So, let's go ahead and approve with the exception of 2.9. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you very much. Okay, so to discussion of 2.9, Board Policy 8730. Commissioner Murray?
Thank you. This agenda item is annual review of the board member compensation. Board Policy 8730. I'd like to make a motion to amend the policy to eliminate the first two full paragraphs of the policy, thereby eliminating any compensation, monetary compensation for school board members.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Do we have any discussion?
The reason I wanted to talk about this was because, in my opinion, the greatest variable or reason why we implemented pay for school board members was to attract school board members so that they could be compensated for babysitting or time off lost and therefore attracting new candidates. Well, it hasn't worked. It's not about the money, so therefore I made my motion.
If we want to amend a policy, we have to go through the process that our policies stand on amending policy unless we want to amend the policy. We have a first, we have to hear it, right? And then we have a second to approve it, because it's a -- we're asking to change a policy.
Yes.
Without it going through committee. So, that would be my understanding. You have a different?
I have a completely different understanding. I reviewed the board policy on policy, that any policy can be amended or changed at any regular board meeting. That's the way I interpret it.
That would be if the policy itself was up for amending on the agenda. What's on the agenda is to approve the compensation and --
The policy as --
Right.
Is to continue an existing policy.
Correct. So, the motion would need to be to pull that out and have that policy go to PPC, not to change it directly from here. Does that make sense, Kevin?
I understand what you're saying, but I disagree because it's on our agenda for annual review. So, but I'm going to --
Okay. All right. So, we will go ahead and send this to PPC. So, I'm going to assume that, you know, because we have a process for that, and so I'm going to assume that Kevin, you'd be on the proposal, and Michelle, then you'd be like the second on it? Okay. Okay, so we will add that to the PPC meeting. When is the next PPC meeting? Is it May?
May 1st.
May 1st? Okay. So, we will add that to May 1st. All right, thank you very much. Yes. What's that? Okay, so Kevin, we should probably -- so Kevin, you probably need to -- Yes. Yes. Thank you very much. Right, because we're going to -- because we're going to committee.
Okay, so now you still have the point of the motion and the second. Kevin is withdrawing his motion.
Withdrawing it. And Michelle?
Ask for Kevin.
Okay. So, we're clear?
We're clear. You still have a consent agenda item out there for approval. Or you need to not approve it. So, you need to vote on the agenda item that was pulled from consent.
Okay. That sounds a little bit like what Kevin was trying to do before. So, okay, so we've got a consent agenda item out there. Could we -- could we have -- the motion can be to send it to committee, right? Okay.
I'll make the motion to send that policy to committee.
Okay. And then Kevin, would you like to second that?
Sure.
Okay. All right. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? All opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, perfect.
I'm sorry, Carl, I didn't get an approval or a dial. So, you're saying you approve?
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Okay. All right, board items. 3.1, recognize winter athlete state qualifiers. Mr. McCormick and Mr. Kruger. What's that?
I said we can trade back up.
Yeah. Mr. Kruger, there you are. Thank you very much. Okay, then we have --
Kathy, can we just have one second here? We're having a problem with our microphones and we're gonna use mine at the podium.
Oh, okay. Great. Thank you. Sure. Do we play the Jeopardy music now or? Would you -- no, I don't want to do it. Okay. Yep, we're ready to go? Thank you so much. Okay, 3.2, we have an overview on our district athletics from Mr. McCleary. Welcome. Okay. Yep, we're, we're ready to go. Thank you so much. Okay, three point two. We have an overview on our district athletics from, uh, Mr. McCleary. Welcome.
School board members and Mr. Holsman. Um, okay. Was it something I said? Um, so what I'd like to do is I want to spend some time tonight talking about our athletic department team. And I, I think these folks can do a much better job than me, but I'd like our middle school athletic directors to introduce themselves and just spend a moment just sharing a little bit about, about them and their roles. So, um, we're gonna start with Annie Markcourt from Marshall.
Hello. I am currently in my eighth year teaching art at Marshall and my first year as athletic director. Uh, we currently serve seven hundred and twenty-six kids. I enjoy education-based athletics because it provides opportunities right on campus for our student athletes to get involved. Participating in school sports creates an extension of the classroom for them to learn new ways to be responsible and respectful as foundational skills that they can carry throughout their life. Thank you, commissioners.
Would like to introduce Matt McCulloch, who is our athletic director at Franklin Middle School.
Hi, thank you for your time tonight. Um, my name is Matt McCulloch. Uh, I started, um, athletic director position at Franklin, uh, January of twenty twenty-three. So, uh, very thankful for my fellow A Ds for really helping, uh, the transition, uh, into this role go pretty smoothly. So just excited to be able to work with our student athletes, um, at Franklin Middle School every single day. Um, I'm a graduate of Franklin Middle School and Parker High School. So it's great to be able to give back and be in the district and help out. Um, so I'm looking forward to, um, continuing this role in the future and working with, um, all my fellow A Ds. So, thank you.
I would like to introduce Carl Schenzel, uh, who is our athletic director at Edison Middle School.
Hello. I'm Carl Schenzel. I've been teaching here for twenty-three years in Janesville School District. Uh, I've been the A D at Edison for seven. I'd just like to tell you guys the highlights this year. Uh, the implementation of our, our school, uh, registration has been a success. I feel like it hopefully will transition well for the high schools and the parents being able to register their kids. Um, also, our numbers are outstanding. We're at about four hundred and fifty kids will participate this year at Edison. Now, again, when saying four hundred and fifty kids, that is, there are a couple of kids that do more than one sport. But with, uh, we're at like six thirteen, I think, for enrollment for, for us to have that many, that's a great success too. So higher numbers than pre-COVID even. So kids are participating. Thank you.
So I'm gonna ask our high school athletic directors to come up as well. So I want to introduce, uh, reintroduce again Ben McCormick, who is at Janesville Craig High School.
I'll keep mine very brief. Um, but I would like to say thank you to the board again for having us here and also to all of our coaches and support staff, uh, who support our student athletes and do so much behind the scenes to make that experience positive for them. Uh, well, we recognized nine individuals tonight. Um, I do want to highlight that we had a hundred and seventy-two athletes that participated in athletics this winter, which is an increase of forty-seven athletes, um, which is quite a number from the previous winter. And we had three hundred and thirteen kids in fall sports, which is also an increase. So we're trending in the right direction after COVID. I also briefly wanted to highlight some of the successes we've had and things we're doing in athletics. On December sixteenth, we hosted, um, the celebration promoting the fiftieth anniversary of Title IX, which was extremely well received and extremely well attended by our alumni, and they were very appreciative. It was a great event, uh, to see everybody at. I also want to give a special thank you to Camilla Owen because she was instrumental in doing that. She was outstanding in that preparation. Right now, several of our coaches are involved in professional development, including multiple book studies that have generated great discussions amongst our coaches, uh, that we believe will have a positive impact in the experience of our student athletes. In particular, one of the workshops we're involved with is called Inside Out Coaching, uh, run by the NFL, which focuses on the vision and purpose of sports for young athletes and also for our coaches. I do have actually a couple of extra books if you're interested. Um, there's a couple of chapters that I think would be a worthwhile read. And we'd be happy to take some time at a later time to discuss some of those things and how it might pertain to our athletic programs here, um, in the district. Thank you again for having us here tonight, um, and continue to support athletics here in Janesville. Thanks so much.
I'd like to introduce Clayton Krieger again, uh, from Janesville Parker.
I will also try to keep it brief, but, um, no promises. I'm the guy that talks too long. Uh, significant, exciting, challenging, and impactful. These are the four words that I would use to describe the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three athletics year as we continue to offer education-based athletics in a way that is an extension of the classroom. Our athletic intent is aligned with our goals set forth by our amazing administration, Chris Lyle, Jolene Toronas, Brian Martin, and Jill Reese Snyder. And we continue to align our district's five promises with the understanding that winning is the goal, but not the purpose of education-based athletics. As an athletic director, I lead to inspire and empower others through meaningful relationships in a positive and disciplined culture that focuses on continuous learning. This year, I could not be more proud of our athletes and our coaches for their accomplishments and am thankful for the continued support of our Parker families and Janesville community. Because I am only supposed to talk for a couple of minutes, I chose, uh, one highlight from each of our five district promises that I will share with you. Number one is student and school success. Inspiring and empowering our student athletes to take ownership of their future is something that we have always prided ourselves on. We recognize that not all student athletes will compete at the college level. In fact, only about three percent of high school students are afforded with that opportunity. Our purpose is to mentor our students and open their doors for future opportunities regardless of the. With our students. Through initiatives such as our yearly national letter of intent signing day, which will be on May third, where we will recognize ten athletes, or our college athlete board, which is now fully complete with all pictures of Parker graduated athletes, thanks to Sean Richards and our entire athletic booster club for all of their work on that, and our next level planning meetings that Mrs. Cruiser and I lead to help our young athletes and families plan and prepare to play at the next level. It is exciting to see Parker High School well represented in college athletics across the U.S. Next is relationships. Building authentic relationships with student athletes, coaches, families, and our community is an important piece to our athletics culture. We have many highlights that have happened throughout the year, but most significant were our celebration of the fiftieth anniversary of Title IX, where we honored our past, present, and future female Viking coaches and athletes at basketball wrestling and gymnastics competitions, and our salute to service, where we honored our community service leaders before and during a game. Number three is culture and climate. At the top of our daily update that our principals share with us each day, it says, "Every Viking, every day." I appreciate the mindset of our coaching staff as we strive to provide memorable experiences for all of our student, all of our students through education-based athletics. Student leader, our goal is to get as many students involved in some capacity of our athletic program as possible. Once again, this year, our sports participation, participation numbers are up by fifteen percent from last year, twenty-two percent from the year before, and we are delighted to report that we have officially rebounded. Number four is finance. With the addition to Jim on our team, he has spearheaded many conversations surrounding facility upgrades. Development. With his leadership, I am excited for the potential opportunities for our athletic programs in the school district of Janesville. And lastly, number five is health and safety. An important part, obviously, of our athletics culture is supporting the physical, social, and emotional needs of our young people. One of the largest areas of growth at Parker has been within our athletic performance training. When our principal, Chris Lyle, hired Jake Stanford into the FIA department, I was excited but had no idea the impact that he would have on our student athletes here at Parker. Coach Dandy has completely changed the look, the feel, and the culture of our weight room. He offers a training curriculum that not only meets the physical needs of our athletes, but he also uses his platform to significantly impact students' lives as he provides life lessons that foster discipline, responsibility, hard work, and effective leadership. As I wrap things up, I want to thank you for your time, thank our school board, our administration, and our entire community for all of your support in education-based athletics. Thank you.
So I'm not sure how to follow, follow those people, but I, I get to work with these folks, uh, weekly and, uh, I'm inspired by them. I'm inspired, um, I'm inspired by their commitment, um, their dedication, their vision, their experience. And, uh, they, they make me better at what I do. Um, so, uh, I want to share just a few things with you. I can't promise I'm gonna be brief, but I will, I will do my best here. So we, we did some research recently and we know that, um, a typical student athlete will spend about nine with a group of coaches. For example, is it eighth grade, their eighth grade summer going into ninth grade until the time they're done playing their high school sport? Skills, a particular skill, um, they need about ten thousand hours to accomplish this task. Well, it's impossible for us to do ten thousand hours. So we need to do everything we can to take advantage of the nine hundred and ninety-six hours that we have with our students, athletes over the course of such a pivotal time in their life. And we, we believe fully that everything that we do, um, is based on how do we help our kids become the most successful they can be? And how do we utilize and leverage every moment that we have with our kids? And, uh, that is really, uh, what, if we had an informal mission statement right now for athletic department, that's where it starts. What can we do to advance our kids? Uh, what's the best way to help them to be successful now, but also be successful, um, uh, in their future, having the skills that they need? So, um, just a few things I want to share with you. I, I, I know that you had an opportunity to see our, our summary, our executive summary, uh, last month. There's a few things that I, I just want to set up for the conversation here. Um, as, as we started our journey last year back in July, I think there were a lot of expectations on what does the district athletic department look like or what could it look like? And, uh, we had to stop and pause ourselves when we started to do our work. We needed to rethink, restart, reimagine, and we needed to make sure we were asking the right questions. And, uh, that's really what our team of athletic directors and myself have been working on is are we asking the right questions? And, um, are we trying to solve the right problems? And so we, we created a strategic plan for the year and it's really the things that we've highlighted in our executive summary. Wanted to be better investors in how we, uh, we value and invest in our coaches. Uh, we wanted to invest more into our athletic directors and the role that they. Fortunately to do that. Uh, we feel still that participation and increase in participation with our students is the best bang for our buck. The best investment we can made and make, and we want that to be the guiding principle for everything that we do. How do we create, uh, experiences and opportunities for our kids to participate? How do we give them, uh, the best access possible? And then, of course, there's things with efficiency, uh, with not just, uh, within, within the district and how we function within the district, but also how we function within our conference and possible future conference affiliations. Um, and we, we also, uh, want to make sure that we are dreaming big. And, uh, we, yes, we compare ourselves to some other districts, but we also mainly want to compare ourselves to what is, uh, the best version of ourselves. And we, we're not quite sure we've even imagined that yet, but, uh, we, we, we're on our way. So just to, to, just break down a few of the details. Again, I just wanted to highlight, um, we are the only district right now that has a coach academy program that lasts the entire school year for their coaches. And again, it goes back to the, how do we help our kids advance, um, in every way possible and be ready for life after the, after high school? So about forty percent of our coaches right now are participating in our professional development opportunities. We expect that that's going to gravitate eventually to all of our coaches as we put some new structures in place. Uh, we've been. Had an opportunity to be addressed, uh, but we think this is the opportunity right now to, uh, to, to consider what that could look like for the future. Which is part of our journey this year, um, and their advice, their counsel, their wisdom on what are some things we need to be thinking about with our strategic plan and then making them part of that strategic plan as well. We had mentioned, um, a, a book earlier, Inside Out Coaching. Well, there's another book called Chop Wood, Carry Water. And then a couple of other offers, uh, authors, Brene Brown and Carol Dweck, our, our, our authors and books that we are, um, we're not just sitting around reading books. We are trying to implement these practices into how we can help advance, um, ourselves as coaches, but also, um, to, to get the best, uh, the best experience for our kiddos. So we are, um, investing heavily in that. So, um, the other pieces that goes with that is really spending time investing in our athletic directors. And there's an opportunity for athletic directors to truly be transformational leaders, not just with the coach, uh, with the coaching staff, but as leader of, leaders of our student athletes as well. And, um, there, uh, there's tremendous ideas and skills in this group of five athletic directors, and they are, are hungry to, um, to continue to work our system, put our system in place, and to see it come to fruition over the next few years. We have, we have people in the right place doing the right jobs, and, um, the things that I'm most impressed about, about them is this, relationships matter first and foremost. There's our relationship people. Who gets the credit. They're all about lifting other people up. Um, and they're people that are willing to, uh, be uncomfortable thinking about. Open to, hey, what if we did it this way? What if we did it that way? And they themselves being leaders often in our processes. So, um, we want to continue to invest in them. They are all members of our Wisconsin Athletic Directors Association now. I am, um, encouraging and pushing them all to get their CAA certification, which is a national certification for athletic directors and, uh, continuing to invest in themselves as, uh, as transformational leaders. So, um, we have a plan for doing that. We had talked about participation for, with student athletes, um, and, and I want to just briefly talk about, um, we've recently conducted a, a Title IX survey, or we call really a, a participation survey with our student athletes. And we have a, a few pieces we need to put together yet, collecting some data. But I did want to share some strokes with you that I, that I think, uh, are pivotal to our next steps moving forward and kind of answering the, why do we do what we do? So, um, right now, looking at the middle school piece, we have about thirty-three percent of our sixth graders participate in a high scho, or I'm sorry, in a, in a school-based sport. Thirty-three percent. We have fifty percent of our seventh graders and we have sixty-two percent of our eighth graders. Well, the reason for the difference in, uh, the percentages is we don't have many opportunities for our sixth graders. And we don't have, uh, we have a few more, but not as many opportunities for seventh graders as we do eighth graders. And we have a hypothesis that we know that our data shows us sixth grade, the transition to middle school, ninth grade, the transition to high school. Those two years are very pivotal in our emotional and mental, um, and connectedness with our students. And by, by participating in something at their school, particularly when they transition in the fall to those schools, we feel that that's one of those things that they can help set our kids up for success and connection, uh, better mental health. Have, um, a, a, an idea in place here in the next few weeks about what can we do to increase some opportunities for sixth graders and seventh graders. Districts as well. Um, just a, a few of the, few of the, um, sports that came through and with our, uh, middle school survey was, uh, flag football, cross-country, three-on-three basketball, and an overwhelming, um, uh, interest in powerlifting for some reason. So we're gonna consider all these options, how we bring these to the fold. The two others, uh, that, that we, we, we feel very strongly, we want to make a, an, a positive investment in is cheerleading and dance. So we are trying to create a structure now where we can, uh, create opportunities for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders in those sports as well. So overall, our goal is how can we increase participation five to ten percent in our middle schools? And we think we have a plan that's gonna be, allow us to do that. Um, the high school side, about fifty-three percent of our students participate in athletics. At Parker and about fifty-two point one something, um, at Craig High School. We're looking to continue to invest in ways to increase that participation. Uh, we would certainly love a hundred percent of our students to be involved, but we're gonna, we're gonna inch our way here over the next few years. What came, uh, what came as part of our surveys there was. Kind of wrapping up this, this conversation here. We, um, we as an athletic department, we're, we're finding our place at the table, uh, with district office. I, I'm just, I'm so delighted that, that, um, our learning and innovation department has been so open and welcoming to some of our initiatives with, with Coach P D, um, working with our human resource department. Um, we have, we still have a lot of work to do there, but we are, um, putting good systems in place there. And then, of course, alignment with our business office. So, so we have a place at the table. We're, we're visible. We know we can continue to do a better job. But we are, we are growing into it with the athletic department. But, uh, we, um, we, we certainly appreciate the, the welcomeness and leadership that we've gotten through those departments. So let's just talk about that. The last piece now is just. So, let's just talk about that. The last piece now is just facilities. I think, I, I think I, I was unpacking a box in my driveway in July and somebody stopped me and asked me about what are we going to do for facilities here in Janesville? And it is such an exciting opportunity and exciting question for us to ask, but it goes back to the, are we asking the right questions? And so, we've spent time as, as a team of athletic directors, working with coaches, working with folks in our community, in our buildings, trying to fi- trying to figure out what are our best questions, what are the things we're trying to solve? We want, we want these to be the things us. We, we, we have it in phases. And the first phase, we used the fall and winter to start formalizing our questions. Our, our situation with our, with our facilities. And we adopted a next level thinking philosophy there. And then, we took winter to, again, establish goals and we looked at infrastructure. We spent a lot of time at other schools, other school districts to see how they went about their planning. We've explored the business standards. We've explored referendum and we explored partnerships with donations and sponsorship. So, that all have been part of our first few phases. We're in this phase right now, spring and summer, where we have an outside organization that is working with, with our teams within our two high schools and with our middle school to create a draft of a version of some plan that may answer all of our questions about, about how we want to proceed as a, as a district with facilities. And at that pla- at that point when we start to put this into place, obviously that is when many more stakeholders are involved with the questions and the, and the ideas and what can this look like and how can we make that happen? So, that's, that's going to be our spring and summer. And our, our, our hope, hope is that, or our plan is that sometime in the fall, we will have a plan that we can start working with over the next year that aligns with perhaps a referendum project, that aligns with the other projects that we have that are capital related to our district. So, so that's, that's how we've been using our time. That's where we are and that's likely where we're going to be going in the next few, few months. So, we're what the potential plan could be for, for our future. Again, I'm, I'm just grateful. I'm grateful every day mentor, leader, and colleague these past couple of months for me. And the leadership in both, and really in all three buildings, administration, the middle schools and then two high schools as well. But delighted to do the work that we're doing and we, we know it matters. We know it makes a difference and just appreciate your continued support. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments?
Um, this was a really great overview. I am particularly excited to hear about the thoughtfulness toward sixth grade opportunities and expanding that. I have a fifth grade son, so I'm just kind of thinking about the, you know, middle school and what, and having three children in the district, I get a firsthand view about the opportunities that are available and I, I see the benefits. Because I hear about them in car rides and after school and when friends are over. So, I'm just really grateful that we're looking at expanding our opportunities. I'm grateful for all of work that you're doing. I know that you have a lot on your plates, but it's, I can't imagine our educational opportunities. So, thank you very much for being here and doing that. I know it makes a big difference in a lot of people's lives. So, just keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Yeah.
Thank you for answering my questions today.
Sure.
Can you, I'm really excited about this academy and the information you sent is really helpful. So, I see there was courses October to December, workshops in January, February. That looked really intensive. I love the, the one about the coach's role in NCAA recruiting. I've kind of had to navigate that myself for my son until now. So, this is really, this would be great. Thank you for that. And then, the book studies for March to April. Can you just talk about, like, will this similar style continue for next year? Does it, you know, I'm sure you're thinking about twenty-three, twenty-four already. I'm sure you, I mean, and these, I know you have to keep, you know, concussion and all that. But, you know, whether it be expansion or this kind of what we're going to try to repeat maybe for a couple of years, it's all, it looks like very valuable.
Directors. So, we have, we have met as a group for several hours multiple times. And so, and one of the deep dives has been on our, our Coach PD. So, yes, our, our plan is to do Coach Academy next year and every year after that. And put some more teeth into it for, for, because we, we expect all of our coaches to participate. But as far as the topic areas are concerned, we, we chose our topics based on input from coaches about the trends that are happening. And so, we see like the, the workshop topics, the in-person workshop topics, those will likely change and evolve next year. And we have such a talented group of coaches. They have an expertise in a particular area. And so, one of our, one of our areas again is the emotional and mental health of our student athletes. And so, that, that will likely be, some of the data we've already seen, that'll likely be one of the, one of our topic areas next year. As far as the, the books that we have, the multiple coaches wanted to do multiple books, but you could only choose one. So, we will likely use almost all these books again next year, at least one more year, maybe longer, because they're all, they're all very valuable. So, we believe in them so much that it's, it's worth repeating. So, it makes sense not to repeat them anymore.
Well, it looks great. And I, I think this also speaks to the amount of, you know, heavy lifting that you've taken on in the role. And I appreciate that because initiatives going. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Well, I just want to say thank you very much as well. You know, a district this size to, it just, it, it always struck me as a little odd that we didn't have an athletic director that oversaw the entire program in a district this size. And, you know, to me, it's about making us, you know, all these things, right? Academics and arts and, you know, and performance and athletics is part of this. As far as making this a premier district. And so, it really is. And it really makes a difference. And I want to thank you very much for this report. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So, next three point three, consider the approval of the administration's recommendation for assistant principal at
Motion for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second from Commissioner Murray and then a second from Commissioner Millard. Big shoes to fill, Commissioner Holz- or Superintendent Holzman?
Yes, in the packet you see, we have a recommendation for Mr. Zach Evans. He is currently the dean of students at So, we obviously want to wish Monty and his family real well, but we're excited to have Zachary. He has been with the district since 2020. As I review his experience, he worked as a Spanish teacher in the Harvard of Columbia County Pointe High School. And we have a recommendation for his employment beginning July first of twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Thank you. Okay, so we have no discussion. Make, make sure that's clear. All in, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye? All opposed. All right. Thank you so much. Okay, moving down to three point six, strategic plan process update. Superintendent Holzman.
Okay, thank you. I'll be brief and So, in your board packet, we created an executive summary that just provided a big picture over. We had conversations a few times now at the board level about our strategic plan and where we are. At your table, you should have a copy of the promises from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-two. And in there, it gives the specific details of some of those goals that we're looking at. You know, a quick history that probably all of you are aware of and being new, I guess I'm still learning. But the promises were adopted in two thousand seventeen. They were updated in two thousand nineteen. This summer, the directors and I provided a district goal that included student achievement and specifically in reading, language, arts, and math. And then, all of our schools jumped onto attendance. Those two have probably overarching similarities, but they don't mesh exactly with where we're at. The promises as written were basically a five-year plan. And we, we talked a little bit about each. Again, the student success, relationships, we heard that today in our presentation from our athletics and how we have those pillars. Seventeen and two thousand nineteen, we're not trending or tracking and we haven't been for a period of time. So, that probably lends us to where we are today and our conversation about strategic plan. So, what I think I, I'm making the recommendation is that we need to take some time as a board to really explore our current status, what we really value in the current promises, and then identify if there are things that are missing that we want to pay attention to. From there, we would have an opportunity to probably identify five to seven, I think, identities, things, pillars, whatever we want to call those, that we might want to start really focusing on and paying attention to. They might be similar to what we said were in the promises. They might be a little different. Once we've established this identity of making sure we know where we are and we can identify what we want to address moving forward, we then can start talking about how we're going to get there. But before I think as a collective group, we really ask anybody from the outside to help us, we have to better define our current status and understand that. And then, really give people an idea of, okay, what are the parameters that we're looking for? And how might we define those five to seven items, things, areas, proud points? We could talk about all kinds of language there that we want to pay attention to. And once we've done that, then we can start making the path about communication, who we're going to involve, how many stakeholders? Are we doing surveys? How long is the process? And identify that as a board, so we have a better understanding and communication plan moving forward. As I talked to Commissioner Myers, President Myers, we did talk a little bit about when we could potentially do this, looking at our current board meetings moving forward. We don't have, this isn't something that is extremely time-sensitive, but I think it's something that is really important for us as we look at just the state of public education moving forward. Part of our process in defining our purpose and our mission and our vision also identifies where we're going to spend our resources. We know that three Rock County school districts went to referendum and weren't successful. I wasn't involved or do I really know their message and what they were talking about? But I do know that if we're all committed to what makes Janesville great and then continue to spend some time on identifying those areas we're going to pay attention to, we'll have a message that's consistent that we can continue to talk about if in fact we do decide that we want to go back in the future for referendum. So, again, we want to take some time to identify those times to complete the next step, review our priorities, what are those priorities, goals, pillars? At that point, then we can seek some outside help. I've had some really good conversations on a regular basis with Oakley Ryan and Dave Hiller, who have committed to kind of helping guide on the side as opposed to being directly involved. And at times, help us with the vetting of maybe some outside people. Before we do that, we need to make sure that we're under the same scope and understanding. So, I'll pause there and say, one option might be to add some time to the April twenty-fifth board meeting. So, upon conclusion of the board meeting, we commit to forty-five minutes or an hour to work on this specific idea. And then, if we seem like we need more time, we commit to another time. You know, we have our reorganization meeting at that time. But then, there isn't a significant amount of agenda items that we have already identified. So, we could probably move through that agenda hopefully relatively quickly and then bring about some time that we can commit to. Another option would be, we would try to find a time that all board members or all commissioners could find between now and the near future. The challenge with that is May and comes and, you know, April leaves us. We're all busy and to try to find a time where all of you, all nine of us can be present at one time, might be challenging. So, that's why I was leaning towards maybe the board meeting, end of the board meeting. So, I'll pause there, see if there's any questions or comments or thoughts about our action moving forward, anything you would like to see.
Questions? Comments? What do you think about the options? Option A? I would think that that's, that's working on this at the, after the twenty-fifth board meeting. So, in other words, as, after we close that meeting and then another forty-five minutes or so. We did. Yes, we did. But a lot of our, I mean, I don't know that we'll have as much conversation about those things. We really had a long conversation about those things. So, it's possible that it will be a little later night. Okay. I think you're, I think that's a good thing to care about. People get tired, right? So, I know my bedtime is like nine, so. Okay. Anything? Okay. All right. I'll let you continue.
Okay, so if between now and the twenty-fifth of April, if there are things that you have questions about, data you're looking for, information you'd like to bring, let me know. We'll put together some general information, again, similar to what we had, just stated estate and where we are and some ideas. Myself and the, the directors will always be part of the guidance and leadership, but we want to make sure that your thoughts, ideas, and opinions are well represented.
Thank you very much. Okay, finance, buildings, and grounds. Mr. Ardrich.
So, we had a brief meeting shortly before our last board meeting when our focus was our staffing plan. And the intent behind my finance meeting was just to understand our financial picture to make sure we could afford really what was being presented from the overall staffing plan. So, just a couple of highlights to note, really, and based on the study that was done, we're looking at flat student enrollment, super modest property value increases. And one of the key points is what was modeled is no change in the tax levy, which is really pretty phenomenal. There are so many unknowns at this point until the state budget becomes solidified, it probably is not worth much more than to say there. So, thank you.
Any questions or comments? Kevin?
Thanks again for the finance committee. You guys do a lot of work. Thanks, Dan, for the nice budget development package. I read all of it. And thanks for this spreadsheet on, you know, having the CPI and the wage increase data to see. I don't know if everybody got to see that or not, but it's a piece of valuable information. And budget related too, I want to thank Tina for your extra work with the healthcare part of the budget too. Just have a question for my friend Greg. You spent countless hours with your team visiting buildings, lots of time. Have you ever thought about visiting outdoor facilities as a tour group? Have you ever thought about visiting outdoor facilities as a tour group? Especially if it's related to athletics. I think that'd be an appropriate thing to possibly do.
We have as a subset of the team some years here's the report out, but yes, we've done that to a, a certain level.
Great. Thanks very much. That's it.
Okay, anything else? All right, well, thank you very much. Okay, summary board request. So we have going to PPC the request about the policy on board salaries. I don't think I have anything else offhand, other than I, that Michelle and I met and did some editing on that policy and sent that to PPC, the one about the, the evaluation process. And so that should be coming as well. So, but that was already a board request. Future meetings, dates, and so on. Oh, wow, I guess I'm going to solo on this. Hold on. Sounds on Tuesday, April eighteenth at four o'clock here. Our Board of Education meeting is the twenty-fifth, starting at six. And then we have a PPC meeting on Monday, May first at four-thirty, again here. So, okay. All right, we have reached the, yes? No, that's just our, there, there will, there's possible, yeah, these are public meetings. So the closed meeting would be, yeah, okay. So there's, that doesn't mean there's none of closed. Thanks. Okay, we have reached the end of our agenda and so we are adjourned from our public meeting. Remember, we're going to go back into closed here in a minute.